All our meeting to order this evening, our city council meeting, work session, May 3rd, 2022. Welcome to those who are in attendance with us tonight. And I assume hopefully John will have someone line, be welcome also. I will now have Councilmember Dowpass, I believe will give us an invitation, a thought, and lead us in the pledge of allegiance for Councilmembers out there.
Great, I'll go with an invocation. Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful that we're gathered here in the city chambers as a city council and as residents and employees of North Ogden. We're grateful that we have this wonderful community and to be a part of such a great place with such great people. We ask that we'll be able to discuss things that are very important to our city and especially as that budget is going to be discussed, that we can be mindful of the many impacts that our decisions will have. And we ask that we'll be able to maintain a good mindset. We're so grateful for all that we have and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Dowpass. So, Councilmember Barker will be calling this a little bit late this evening. And before we get into our active agenda, we'd like to wish Councilmember Severing happy birthday today. And I think when Councilmember Barker gets here, he wants to sing, but we'll wait till he arrives.
We'll have to include Phil.
And that's the next one.
Okay.
Tomorrow is Councilmember Swanson's birthday. And so we wish him a happy birthday also. Uh, council, you've had a chance to look at the agenda. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose this evening? Seeing none, we will move on then to item three on our active agenda. And with us this evening, Dave Espinosa, our Public Works Director, we've asked him to, oop. I already checked that off. Uh, I guess we'll start with public comments, Dave, before we get to you. Sorry about that. For some reason, I skipped right over that, which is starting to be a trend. So, do we have anyone here tonight who would like to make a comment?
That's why I came, I thought, okay.
I'll just remind you as you step up there, if you give us your name, if you're resident of North Ogden. And also if you would limit your comments to five minutes, we would appreciate it. Go ahead.
My name is Mona Lisa Wild, I do live here in North Ogden City and I am here to support any pay raises you can give to North Ogden City employees. I think they're worth it and as much as you can give, we'd appreciate it. I don't mind my taxes being raised in order to accommodate that, especially for the police department, who is always quick to come to my beck and call if I need them. And I have a little bit of an idea of what it's like to be a city employee. So, it makes you feel valued, it makes you feel appreciated. Um, definitely the cost of living has gone up, as we all know, and we need to keep that in mind. And so, I'm just 100% and 150% supportive of any pay raises, so go, go. And thanks for calling it in for the city.
Thank you. And well, that was very kind of you to come and support the city employees. Actually, appreciate it. John, do we have anyone online or anyone else here? No one at this time. So, Dave, now, we'll hear from you about a follow-up on recycling.
So, real quick, I just wanted to talk about, you guys had asked us to come in back and review, going back to recycling or uh, where recycling is at since, since the last time we talked about it. So, I was able to reach out and, and talk to Recycled Earth, which is the local recycling company here. Uh, this is where recycling would go if we decided to go back into recycling. Because it's so close in proximity, the next closest is in Cash Valley. And then you've got Wasatch Front Recycling, which is down in Salt Lake. So, there's not a lot of recycling options. And so, that's kind of where we would probably end up going back to. Uh, so, in talking with them, uh, their rates have stabilized. And so you can see if you scroll up just a little bit, uh, they went to the recycling company there. So, they went to a flat $50 fee for, per ton for their recycling coming in. Uh, so I was able to demonstrate that here, just to show you guys, uh, this is kind of how the breakdown goes. And, and that's not where the, the expenses to North Ogden City is going to recycling or to the plant itself, right? Um, recycling's fairly light. And so, when you take recycling out there, you're not talking about a ton of tonnage, right? And so, and so, the price difference between where Weaver County just, so that 4414 is where Weaver County just moved to uh, this year. And the $50, you know, there is a $7 difference there, but it, you know, when you look at it overall, it's, that's not the big cost. The big cost is going, and you can see on that blue can line, um, when you move that blue can to where it's its own driver, uh, it has to be able to get picked up by one, you know, so you have a driver, a truck, all those, those costs come into effect here. And so now that cost goes up to 420. If you scroll back now, sure. You can see the difference, you know, when we're going, uh, when we just use it as an extra can, it's only a dollar 85 because the same driver's picking up all the cans at the same time. So, that's where you see that you, you know, that diff, that different increase. Um, some of the other questions that were asked of us as far as recycling goes is, you know, are they stable and where is our recycling going else? You know, uh, because of some of the issues overseas, um, Recycled Earth has, has found a way to, to make it work here, you know? And so, that other sheet was just to give you an, uh, an example of, of where their stuff is going. Uh, they found a mill up in Washington State to take all their cardboard. She was, she was explaining to me that it used to be a wood mill. Um, and they were able to change all their stuff over. And that's, that's where all the cardboard is now really, is, is stateside here. Um, the plastics, the ones and twos plastics are going to a mill in Ca- in Canada. Um, the metals are being distributed to a distributor here and then the broker from here takes it, you know, other places. But that, that's here local. And then the paper's the same way that she has a, um, a distributor. And so that's what I was kind of showing you guys here is, these are the different things that we can recycle. And they found ways to, to, to distribute them here, either United States, Canada. They're, they're a lot more local than sending them overseas to China or what, you know, with, with the issues that we've had with that. So, so that was one of the other questions that had been brought up quite a bit. And then, like I said, the tonnage, it was so, it was fluctuating so much. It was, you know, going anywhere from $40 to $90 and all over. And, and so they've chose to do this flat rate where it's $50 a ton. Um, and they will basically take all of that, they'll distribute what they can to recycling. And that, that's all part of the fee now. And so, what it comes down to now for us is, and for you guys is, it's that cost, it's that cost of doing another driver with another truck and bringing back recycling. Um, and to tell you that's about $15,000 a month to do that with that extra driver and extra truck, which is about $2.40. And everybody knows where we are, you know, as far as getting an equipment and those kind of things. And so, the Republic, we can't even start this till July of next year. So, this isn't even part of this budget. Um, as soon as they begin truck was about 12 months. So, I haven't given them time to get a trucker driver and everything. So, we wouldn't even start it till July of next year. Um, so when I say 241, it, it's guessing, I mean, that's based on right now. And so you're probably increasing Republic another 3%. And if the transfer station or Recycled Earth increased, then we have to put those increases on it as well. So, I, to be honest with you, I think it's between $2.50 and $3.00 by the time we get to next year um, per month for all of our citizens as an increase. And so, that's kind of where, where we're at. Any questions, thoughts? Councilmember Swanson?
Yeah, happy now?
Yeah, well, as long as she's talking.
The, um, the $50 flat rate, how long is that guaranteed?
That wasn't a guarantee. Um, I talked to Ogden City and they, it has stabilized there. So, like, they, they aren't seeing the fluctuations from, you know, from Recycled Earth like they were at the beginning.
That's just the, the fee that it is now. It could change next month.
Yes, ma'am, or yes, sir.
Council, any other questions for Dave while he's here? Councilmember.
Yes, so, so Dave, this is looking like what we can guarantee will be recycled is cardboard and paper and ones and twos plastics.
Ones and twos plastics, aluminum, right, and then you do aluminum.
Okay, so aluminum can go in there. Alright, so my question is, oh.
There's a ton of education because paper is an animal, right? You get wax paper, you can't do that. Shredded paper, you can't do that. So, I mean, but I, I think, you know, if we were given 15 months, we'd have to.
Right, so I'm just wondering about what kind of communication and education plan we can put out. I mean, I would really love, um, when my husband worked, he campaigned for Orrin Hatchback when he was just out of high school, right? And they, they did this thing called having neighborhood leads. So, it was kind of like a person in the neighborhood that was kind of in charge of letting everybody else in that neighborhood know about stuff. And so I'm wondering if we can do something like that with educating and recycle. We have a lot of residents that are very enthusiastic about recycling. I wonder if we can kind of tap into those. Look up all of the people that have emailed us about where's our recycling to kind of get them. Because they're of course going to be the best ones to get the word out, I think.
Yeah.
So, is that an idea that we could kind of bat around?
I mean, and we'd have to, right? Because now that we've been doing this for a year and a half and letting everybody use the blue can, I mean, it, everybody's using it for everything. So, to, to get everybody back into the recycling ways. Um, I mean, there still are people that just use a blue can because in hopes that they were going to be able to go back to recycling at some point. Um, but there, there would be a ton of education as far as that would go. And, and we would, I mean, I think it would take all 15 months to make sure that we're back doing what we're supposed to.
I wonder if we could just like, you know, get something like this and tack it on top of each of the blue cans. I mean, I don't know how, how much resources that would take or, you know, again, but there's just like, please remember, or, and then like the big date of what it's gonna start.
And that's the thing is, I mean, if we decide to go back that route, I think there's plenty of options. I, I've talked to other cities that when they stopped theirs, they, they went to like a magnet where they sent out magnets to everybody so that you could know what to recycle, what not to recycle. But it's just a matter of, I mean, if we want to make that switch and transition back to recycle, doesn't it?
Cool, alright.
Council Dowpass?
Uh, is there going to be a problem with the blue cans being too dirty? I mean, everyone's transitioned to using that recycle as garbage. Is there any problem that it will, would that be a problem?
That's a good question. I hadn't even thought about that.
It's possibly, possible because, I mean, where they've been using it for everything and I think it would be.
And so that's something we definitely have to go around and maybe check, you know, what cans. I mean, because I know that some people use it, they're green or they're blue and for green waste stuff. And so, it's, you're, you're 100% right. I never had thought about that, but that's something that we definitely have to address. And, you know, cans are at, what's, $100?
$126 bucks.
$126 bucks a piece. So, I mean, if it's a big transition to transition some of those over, that's another cost that we're talking about as well.
Questions? Dave, what are we paying currently for the dumpsters? So, do we have all the, uh?
They, or, because the dumpster is in the hall and everything. What's your estimate on what we're already paying? So, they're like, they're $23 a pickup. We do it three times a week. So, you're $75 per dumpster a week to get those picked up. And, and that's another thing, I mean, we, we talked about, you know, if we do more dumpsters, do we want to do them in other places, you know, and put cameras up? I mean, there, there's a bunch of options that way too, if we want to look at that option as well. Um, because, like I said, going back to recycling, you're, you're talking about $200,000 a year increase. Um, so, I mean, there's a lot of things you can do as far as dumpsters and those kind of things if we want to go that route or, or we elect recycle.
David, we've been able to confirm that the recycled products truly can be shipped out. I continue to read articles about how recycling is basically to help people feel good, but it's really ended up in not efficient, effective places.
And, and that was the conversation I had with Amy, uh, with Recycle Earth is, you know, we have that same concern. It's like, you know, if we're gonna, you know, spend this much more money, are these really going places? And all I can tell you is what she, you know, what she expressed, the, the cardboard going out to Washington and the plastics are going to Canada. And like I said, you know, the, the paper and aluminum are being sent from here. But I don't, from that, from that point, you know, she even said, she's like, you know, after that, I, I can't tell you either. So.
Any other questions? Guess we don't have to make a decision this evening.
No, like I said, we've got, we've got a little bit of time. I mean, besides the truck thing, it's going to take a, you know, take a year or so. Uh, we probably need to figure it out in the next couple of months, but, you know, we can start soaking that in and deciding. Um, the other thing that Wasatch Front does is, so that's the recycling and garbage company in Salt Lake. Uh, they put out a survey, um, and they actually show what the adjustments are going to be every, every, the, the next year and say, is recycling worth it to you, you know? Tell us, you know, your thoughts about, is recycling worth paying this extra money for you guys? And, and seeing what their citizens can do. I mean, we can do something like that as well. I talked to Katie and we can look at something like that. Um, but, yeah, we probably do need a decision next, I would say, in the next month, so we can get a truck.
Any other questions? Councilman Swanson?
Dave, in all of your dealings with Amy, I forget her husband's name, anyway, there, Recycle Earth. Do you get a, a sense, and it's really just kind of a gut check, um, do you get a sense that they will be around long-term?
That's, that's hard. I, I believe so because I feel like that they made some necessary steps to try to make this, you know, that we can't send it to China, so they're, they are doing different things to make sure that they can, you know, uh, stabilize here and, and be, and like I said, the, the rates are stabilized and it, it looks like they're always looking for new options in different places to go. So, yeah, I guess I would say yes.
And then, I'll, I'll just express one of the concerns that I have that's tied to that question. My, my field, and it's just a completely subjective field, so far in our dealings with Recycle Earth has been that um, they are individuals who love recycling but are really trying hard to keep their business alive. And I've read much of the same things that Mayor has read and I still don't have a lot of warm and fuzzies that the recyclable industry is sustainable because of all that's being uncovered and, you know, and all the, it's not just China dropping out of it. It's where much of it's being tracked to and what's actually happened to much of it, once it hits brokers and those kinds of things. I, I just don't want to be back where we were, where we're a ball in a juggler's hands and we never know where we are and what end we're going to be in and how much it's going to cost. Um, I, I don't want to go through the effort of reinstituting recycling and all that that's going to entail. And, you know, even, uh, our garbage company. Public Recycle Earth, you know, buying a truck and all of that. It's not just, as you all know, it's not just a matter of saying, yeah, let's do this.
And, and, and that conversation did happen with, with myself and Amy as far as that it'll never go back to where it was. Like, you'll never have the free recycling.
No, I'm not looking for that.
Um, but I don't know if it'll, if this is stable and this is, you know, or like you said, if, if, if something else happens, is it going to be unstable again? Um, I, I can't predict that, I don't.
Um, so, okay, just trying to get a sense, thanks, thanks.
So, Dave, would you, would you say the incremental tipping fee, uh, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to go through this analysis earlier, but um, would it just be the incremental $6 because we're paying the $44 tipping fee now for everything that's going there?
Yeah.
So, we pay them 50, then they'd be responsible for anything that goes to the, so have we offset this cost with the reduction in our tipping fee for what we're already paying? Because they're, they're taking all that to the landfill now, right?
Yeah, yeah, so everything's going to the landfill right now at $44.
Um, so we'd extract what's going to recycle.
It's not even 10%, like, like I said, the, the weight differences, and you can go back to that other sheet because these are actual numbers from January, February, March. So, I mean, you can see that the weight difference, you know, we take 518 tons in January and we only took 70, 70 tons to Recycle Earth. That's, I picked a year that we still have renewed recycling. And so, I mean.
So, if I'm looking at this, what's the incremental tipping fee for recycle? That's my question.
So, it'd be the six, roughly $6 times the 70 tons. So, it'd be 420 extra dollars in tipping fees. But the transportation fees would be.
And the tip, like I said, the tipping fees are not the, it's not the expenses, it's the transportation.
So, we haven't offset it, yes?
I did not, sorry.
Okay, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's material. I was just trying to look through this to see. Any other questions? Um, I know you look at this and you say 241, a month doesn't sound too much. But when you think about it, that's what we increased property taxes and we got, you know, people weren't happy with that. Um, not even surprise, most entities will be substantially increasing their property taxes. We know Weaver County's already voted through a tax increase. I think the fire district's taken a pretty good increase. They're planning on sewer districts taking substantial increase. We're going to have to pass through some costs on our utilities, so. So, well, that's good information. Any other questions? Or give us something to consider. You did, you did really ask it to, to follow up and give this information. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave.
Appreciate it. Alright, we'll move on to item number four. Mr. Cole, our city manager and attorney. I don't see Jamie here, so I guess you're on by yourself, John?
Uh, she is online, um, still somewhat on bedrest. Here is our budget presentation. Uh, you will recognize this theme, the slide theme, it is the constant, or the one we've been using. Um, as well as, just a reminder, these are some of the questions that we're, will be coming and discussing uh, probably a little bit more in detail between the tentative budget and the final budget. I actually promoted Jamie to a panelist. Um, but those are things that will be coming back from too. We just don't want you to think we've forgotten about them. Um, this is this year's planned capital expenditure budget for general fund projects. Uh, it's roughly $13.2 million. Um, some of those are still, haven't been bid out or fully quoted out. Um, but that's the number that we have in the budget this year. It includes things like the public safety building. Um, it does not include the capital project reserve. That is listed on there to make it clear that we're, we're saving that money separate as a fund balance dedication uh, to just for the accounting purposes, but we thought we'd mention it. Uh, there's money in there for the impact fee study, uh, the new playground at Lomond New Park, the new playground at Wadman Park, the parking lot across the street that will wrap around the south and the east side of the senior center. It's based on the agreement we have with the county from the sale of the skate park and the construction of the, the library, uh, expansion. Uh, Trelle had improvements in Barker Park, audio and theatrical improvements that are tied to the grant grants. Um, the final closeout of the, um, the work on the 2600 and 400 East. Uh, that's tied to landscaping and a few other items that we couldn't do at the end of the year because of watering and other restrictions. And then the North Ogden Plaza WFRC grant is technically an RDA amount and contribution, but we have it listed here for purposes of this discussion. Any questions on those projects or is there something we're seeing? And, and at the end, we'll go through the list and talk about each of them individually, so you can see how the money, the money's set up and the balances. Um, but we wanted to kind of do it in two-part, kind of a general discussion and then the, the dollars. I just want to make sure that we're, we're not, we're not giving you too much information at once because it would, it could be drowning, right?
Yeah, of course. So, my question is just about the capital project reserve. That's generally kind of our unfunded depreciation project. Is that kind of what you're talking about?
Think of that as kind of a rainy day fund. It's a million dollars is, will be there for emergency use as kind of the, the program. Or depending on how the council wants to talk about saving for the future, it might be money that is, is slated for a specific project. Um, you know, if we ever got to the point where we didn't have any capital projects to do, we would need a fund balance. But as you're all aware, there are other projects that need to be done at some point in the future. And so it's kind of that piggy bank for those future projects.
Okay.
We're now into the picture phase, uh, because there's not a lot of information. Uh, so these are BNC road projects for streets. Um, we have it slated at $416,000. That number has been as high as this, as $800,000 or as low as a couple hundred thousand. Uh, we find that sometimes accumulating a little bit of this money and then spending it to do lots of projects will get a little bit better rate. Uh, but this is about the average cost that we send or that we spend of the BNC road money we get.
John, I just got a text message. They're, they're saying they're still seeing the garbage screen.
Oh, they wanted me to share the screen? Okay.
Probably all sort of watching, but appreciate it.
Multitasking, so it, they should, they should see it now. So, thank you, Mayor. Um, but so not a lot of exciting projects and streets, although that is what keeps our street system functioning and workable. Um, here are the water projects we have planned for this year. This, this $5.8 million number is high. This is not what we normally do. We normally do somewhere between 500 and a million dollars worth of work. We have been saving though specifically for the 2 million gallon water tank and this Fruitland Drive water line. And the Fruitland Drive booster are all kind of tied together. We've been saving for those projects as well as a good portion of those projects are covered by the ARPA funds that we received, the $2.4 million. So, that's included in these expenses. Um, the other ones are replacements on 1500 and 1700 north, the connection there. Um, new equipment at the canyon well and that are two, or that are well on 1050. The idea of being, bringing those wells online, um, some PRB monitoring upgrades. And then we always do a water line upgrade project. Um, I can't remember which neighborhood we're doing. I can't remember which neighborhood we're doing.
So we'll do seventeen hundred and then a couple maybe thirty fifty and.
Ten fifty to eleven twenty five right there, there's a few new scenarios that.
So, and those projects are based on when, how, where we're seeing breaks, how old the lines are. And just kind of basically trying to get ahead of system failures. Since, since we're talking about it, one of the things that comes up on Facebook quite often recently is a discussion about how many breaks we see. That is actually happening because we're communicating the breaks, meaning not that our lines are breaking more, cause we're talking about them. But people are more aware of the breaks because we're making them aware. Um, if you go back ten years, we were typically seeing, I think around thirty breaks a year.
Oh, at least.
And we're down less than twenty? Okay, so, and and every year's a little different, which is why I'm a little uncertain, but we have significantly reduced them because of this strategic replacement program. That's based on age of pipes, where we're seeing breaks and things, and sometimes we've had projects kind of shift mid-year when we realize there's a more problematic area. The system is very sophisticated. Our soils are very problematic. And we've found that there are areas where we have newer pipes that don't last as long as older pipes because of the soil they're in. You know, really acidic soil can cause problems depending on the type of pipe that was laid. And but the nice thing is the newer pipe is more resistant to all soil types than the old pipe used to be, so. Um, any questions about water projects?
I was just curious, what is the equipment at the wells?
Uh, so that would be essentially turning, making them into production, so both of those wells are exploratory wells. And this will be dropping in the pumps, uh, doing the, all the work, if Jason could probably give you better details about exactly what that incorporates.
We're just not, we're not putting the pump houses on top of them, it's just the kind of the.
It would be basically build that building, he played from that well and have it ready to pump it into the system.
Oh, okay, awesome.
And and then we anticipate that maybe next year we'll also look at, not next year, but the following year, look at some additional exploratory wells. Um, because as we bring wells online and as we have new residents join, we need to find new, um, ways to get capacity out of the ground. So that the North Ogden City bought or acquired enough water rights back in the fifties and sixties. To pretty much carry us to build out for our anticipated growth, um, and they are pretty good water rights, meaning they're old. High priority. But we still have to put the straw into the ground and pull it out, and those straws also compete. In most of them in the same aquifer, aquifer as Weaver Basin and others. Um, and so there's things that happen there, we do have a couple of our wells as well as our springs. That don't compete for the same water, so we have one well that's in a, like an independent aquifer. Uh, is probably the best way to say it, it doesn't mean it doesn't relate, but it's not as affected by the stuff Weaver Basin is doing. Um, and then our springs are act pretty independently of all the wells, although, um, in general, they, they used to recharge some of the aquifers. Based on how they used to drain into the soil just as they went down the riverbeds and things, so. Anyways, but y'all know water's a, water is a hot commodity in, in Utah, in the desert, yes. Uh, other questions about water, and really Jason, uh, is an expert on water systems. If you ever want to be fascinated to death, have him take you on a tour of our facilities because you, you would be amazed at what we have.
Been there, done that. So it's, it's good, John, just one question I get asked a lot, um, you know, the study, we say we have plenty of water to build out. Um, they're saying, what was the tolerance for the droughts that we anticipate we're in and? Some say they're going to worsen, or was that based upon normal water years?
So it is based on, uh, what's called priority. Which means the first person who came into this valley and started taking water had the highest priority to that water. And they're the last person that runs out of water.
Theoretically. Right, you have to, you have to prove that, you have to prove it your water.
Right.
And we know that there's a lot more entitlements out there than there is water.
That's true.
And I do understand the priority, but we also know that. Um, larger cities seem to have more power and the legislature seems to be able to allocate water as they see fit. So on back to my question, was our study done on normal water years or was there a tolerance for the type of drought where?
So our study was, was based on water usage of probably close to eight hundred gallons a day per resident, per structure. Um, the actual usage numbers are closer to a hundred gallons a day. So it wasn't done, it was based on a typical year, it wasn't based on a drought year. Um, but in theory, the water amount we have is. Sufficient for the hundred to two, hundred to a hundred fifty gallons a day. Um, if you look at some of the cities who've been very aggressive on water use. Um, there are cities in Arizona and Nevada who are getting their water use down into the eighty gallons a day. One of, two of the biggest drivers of that, or three, I guess, are obviously, uh, bathroom use, meaning toilets, sinks and showerheads. Laundry is a huge thing, and then the, the, the system itself, how good the system retains water and, and is, keeps itself from leaking. Um, and those are some of the improvements that we've been doing over the last couple of years and planning is. Other ways to monitor and check our system, cause the state makes sure that we're using our water safely. Um, the nice thing is with the legislation that the state uses with the big cities. It usually trickles down and protects us as well. Um, with the municipal higher prioritized thing. Um, but you know, people, if you really want to know who the most powerful person in Utah is, it's the Utah State Engineer. Because that individual manages all the water rights in the state and basically says who, who has an economically viable water interest. So.
I believe you have to prove that you have a need for those water rights, else the state can't take them back.
Uh, they can, there is a carve out for municipal water rights where we don't have to prove we've used them, we have to prove we need them.
Right.
And so, uh, we do have a, a little bit of a benefit over like a farmer in that respect. Um, and we do have on retainer a water right attorney who we pay them a certain amount of, it's a flat fee, I think fifteen hundred bucks a year. And they, they monitor and maintain all our water rights, uh, to just make sure that we are covered as well as Jason, um, also watches and monitors it as well.
Council, I've asked, um, Dave to report to us what our water usage is in the city. The, in comparison to prior years, so we can see that. Also, how much longer it's taking us, I see Jason's looking over at Dave going, really? Yeah, and you know, what, what we're seeing in recharge time in our wells, because I think part of the problem too is. We don't have the storage for it, the entitlement for, like we talked about with the lower part of the city. So storage is important, uh, which is included in this project. Yeah, sorry to surprise you, Jason, but I thought it would be good for the citizens of the council to see. What is our usage, are we making any progress in conservation? Or what are we seeing in time to regenerate our tanks of that nature, so we have a feel for what's going on?
And Jason monitors, monitors that every single day.
Yeah, so we have the information, we just want to see, you know, are we making progress with conservation?
I don't see that we're doing any different on that production per day. It's still between one point four million and one point six million gallons per day, which on average would be about. A usage of about between two hundred and two hundred forty gallons per home. You know, so there's, there's some that conserve water and then others that have leaking toilets that were actively delivering them notices that they're. So it's not a perfect system.
I thought it'd just be good for us to see, are we making any progress?
I think we see a lot of people, a lot of people calling and asking questions, hey, can I do this? Hey, is this okay versus just doing, you know, with the water that they, they'd like, you know? And I think, I get a lot of, I probably get five, six questions a week, as far as zero escaping and do I have to have turf, things like that, you know, so. As far as drinking water goes. Um, I feel like there's a lot of homes that are using anywhere between sixty and eighty gallons per day. But then again, there's some homes that they have, they have a leaking service into the house, so they have. Two toilets in there that are leaking and they didn't even know, you know, they're using almost a thousand gallons a day and, and we've notified them. And we'll, we'll turn them off eventually and tell them, hey, you have to at least touch base with us, just so we can notify, you know, actually have a conversation that. That's a problem, you know, so when, we don't have a lot of increase in the spring flows this year again, and so. Uh, a lot of times what we're doing is we're still pumping water to supplement that spring water that's not, not there, so.
And as much as we're trying to get the word out, it was interesting, I was driving the other day and saw a young man out washing his car. In the driveway, so we've got, obviously. But I think if we can, you know, they say what's measured, uh, improves. And so I think if we can show, hey, we're not making any progress with conservation, or we are. And maybe we can actually incentivize those people that are using sixty to eighty gallons a. A day instead of punishing those who are using more or a combination. There, but we appreciate what you do with the water, so, sorry to surprise you.
Well, we, we, we get our daily production totals, so we've, we've been doing that since last summer, you know, every single day, and so we know exactly where they're at every day. I see that in the morning and Italian, so we know where they're at, but on average, we're not. We've just shifted that from spring flows to the well flows, you know, and so as far as the level of the ground, you know, we have. Decreased the groundwater level by about ten feet. From where it was, uh, a few years ago, so.
Well, we appreciate that information, we can just show what the citizens are using, what the monthly usage is. Hopefully we'll make some improvements, cause I think, rather than the desert, conservation's gonna be with us, so. Councilmember Swanson, did you have a?
Yeah, John, just a, for my own clarification, the analysis that was done some time ago. That basically said we've got enough water rights to build out. That, that analysis was based on providing eight hundred gallons per day, per person?
Per resident.
Per resident.
Per structure.
Per structure, okay, or resident, not residents.
And it was done by the engineers back in the nineties, as they evaluated what we had. Um, I can tell you from a, a. Army side, there are people challenging the state standard of eight hundred, cause it's still, the state is still pushing that standard. Um, we haven't challenged it as a city, cause we haven't run into an issue. Um, but I think we do have the opportunity if we need, with the way our system reads, like Jason said, we can read everything every day. Uh, we would have the information to be able to show the state that we don't need eight hundred gallons, we need two hundred and fifty. They might push us into a, a cushion and say, well, we won't yet have a hundred and fifty percent of that. But is, in reality, we, we should have enough water. And I'm, I'm very confident that before this, before ours, before our citizens would run out of drinking, found drinking water. Pretty much everything else in the valley would be destitute. Cause of our situation, so.
Thank you. It's like no one else having food and people needing it.
Well, and I, and I think that's because the priority will always go to drinking water. Um, and that's the way the state has set it up, and so the, the alfalfa fields will dry up before the, the drinking fountain wells will.
All right, John, continue on.
Okay, sewer. Uh, this is not one of our employees, it's just a, I'm gonna check that off the internet, so. Uh, but we have sewer lining and manhole lining projects, um, and then some flow meters included in this. Um, the S L Brad, we're trying to evaluate, that's a sonar system that helps us look for problem areas in, in the, in the city. Uh, we tried it this year and included it in the budget, but we might be moving away from it, we're. Uh, working through some questions we have about how the process works, um, just to. Uh, make sure that, that we get the bang for the buck, and it might be eliminated in favor of. Additional body that we had taken out of the, we had swapped an additional employee for this system, and we might, uh, be swapping it back. Based on, on what we think of the performance of the system. Um, and flow meters are, are designed to help us in our conversation with. The, the sewer district to help us evaluate how much flow we're actually sending to them. As well as help us identify areas where we're getting groundwater intrusion or potentially some pump intrusion. Uh, they call that infiltration and inflow. So those are some things that, that we're looking for, but nothing really unusual or out of ordinary on this capital project side. Any questions about sewer? Okay. Uh, apparently when you search stormwater, this is the type of image you get, so this is what we went with. Um, this two hundred and forty thousand does not include the community pond, that project that has been planned, uh, because we don't have a. An updated engineer's estimate, um, for that, and we are still, uh. We don't anticipate. That we have a firm start deadline, the engineer who's in charge, which is J U B, uh, that is pine use engineer. Had thinks that there's a chance we might turn dirt next spring. But. We're not, we're not counting on anything because they told us it was earlier before and here we are. Not yet. Um, I had did, I asked Dave, I, I left the replaced thirty year mower in here, we really do use a mower, two mowers that are thirty years old. And we are replacing one of them because it just can't do it anymore. Um, but they, it is a kind of a specialized, it's more of a brush mower, designed to kind of handle. Larger stuff on our, on our storm basins, um, but it's a forty thousand dollar mower, so they're not cheap. But we do get every, everything out of them again. Uh, bubble up boxes, if you're not aware of those, those are basically where a storm line dead ends or where we think there's a capacity issue. And it forces the storm water to the surface where it can run along the gutter into another, and then back into the storm system. It's kind of a, a pressure relief system. In fact, there are cities, I don't think we have any like this, uh, but there are cities where they have welded the manhole covers. Down because the stormwater and storm events will pop them off. Um, I'm pretty, I'm, I'm fairly confident, we don't have any of these, but this is the type, this type of box is helpful to eliminate that issue. Um, but like I said, we don't have any, it's just a, like, another way to deal with, uh, areas where we're seeing increased flows. And then the drying pad is a state requirement, uh, our leaf truck and some of our other stuff. And things, we have to take the material and let it sit and dry and drain into, um, the sewer system. Before we can take the dirt and use it someplace else or send it to a spot. Uh, this will help us, uh, with some. Of that EPA and, and state stormwater requirements. Any questions about those? Okay, oh, and that was, that was it for capital projects. So this is where I'm going to, uh, this is the really exciting part of the capital projects. Uh, we didn't start with this worksheet because I didn't, I didn't think it would be fair. Jamie has put a lot of time into this and you can all read this, right? But essentially, I'll, I'll do an overview and then we'll zoom in. What, what happened is Jamie has gone through and listed every project in a row and categorized it and then put the amount in a column. And then type those columns to where the source of revenue is coming from, and we'll, I think you should have got this in your emails. Um, but you didn't, uh, get the full explanation, so we'll, we'll zoom in. Uh, so you can kind of see what we're talking about, but if you look at Lowman View Park. It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and it's coming out of our capital project fund. And so the idea is, on this sheet, it gives you that, all that information, which is our estimate. And the, the summary information, if you go further down, um, where you see like the mower, our thirty year mower that we have. It actually shows up in the stormwater fund. Um, and so this is where those amounts came from, and I think for purposes of our discussion. I think it'd be helpful to kind of go down and look at columns B and C and see if you have any questions about the actual amounts or about the projects themselves. Um, and then we can, we can go from there, for example, I know there's a question about the parking lot at the senior center. Um, it's our estimate right now is it'll be three hundred thousand dollars. Um, but there's a question about whether or not we can ask, we can convince the county to let us delay the project into another fiscal year. The agreement as it's written right now requires us to have it done basically by July first. Of next year, so not in three months, but in fifteen months. And so, the, the law. And so the the logic behind that would be if we don't have to spend that money, then that leaves more money in the fund balance to maybe um. Cover any other projects or just. Keep our fund balance where we want it to, um, with our goal of kind of fun of keeping their five hundred thousand and additional money in that fund this year. So, um. And the. So this includes all our projects. Um, you can see the public safety building is in here, um, the five, the ten point five is not the estimate we got from the contractor. Uh, the estimate from the contractor was nine point six, not saying that that's not going to wiggle and change with with prices. Um, but the the bond number is not the bond, the number we bonded for because we've spent some of that money. We bought the house. We've done some studies, done some work, and so that bond number has been reduced, the idea being that that money has been spent, we haven't touched the fund balance, we've only been. Uh, using the bond money for that sort of thing. So are there, are there any projects on this first list and the amounts that the council would like to talk about? We should eliminate or? Any other details?
And one of the things that we've talked about is uh. Postponing the Lowman View Park replacement. Because that equipment is in. Apparently. It's age ready to be rotated, but condition. It it could last another year or so. Um, without being rotated out, uh, that's been one that we've discussed.
Okay. And I Tiffany had to run across the street and do a presentation for uh. Quonis Club. Um, and so I, she could probably speak to that. A little bit more as well, and none of these decisions have to be made tonight. It's more about making sure that we're we're getting the right information and the answers before we do our final budget. Yeah.
Uh, John, I I I think it's. It's important that the council see. What this does to the the budget. Last budget I saw with all these projects, if they were approved. We have a deficit. Three hundred and some odd thousand dollars.
Three hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eight thousand dollars. And twenty seven cents. Twenty six. Um, so I think the council needs to know that is that approving all those projects. Uh, requires. And that already includes, I think, a proposed seven percent increase in property taxes.
That's correct.
Uh, and still three hundred and fifty three thousand dollars short. Unless there's other things that have been included in that. Think council member uh Swanson's. Comment about the parks is good, I think we need to get on the rotation schedule. Because if we replace both these in the same year, and I agree, Lowman View's equipment's not that bad. Then we force the next council. At some point down the road to replace two parks in one year. And I think it'd be good to get on a rotation schedule.
Do you have a rotation schedule? Have you seen it?
Uh, well, apparently we had a rotation schedule where two parks are uh. At one time and they will wear out about the same time.
So the the rotation schedule, it's a. I don't want to say it's a new invention, but it's a newly funded invention is maybe the right way to say it. Um, there were several years where we didn't do any parks and a little reason we're ending up with a couple is it it wasn't adhered to. Which is why we're behind, and if we can catch ourselves up, then we'll be back on it and on track to. Keep it on the 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 menu or the industry standard is fifteen years. Uh, and we have, we have exceeded that, I think, uh, Wadman was twenty five years old or thirty. Um, and the one over at Barker Park, for example, was installed in two thousand and four, so it's eighteen years old. It still is working and functional, but. Um, you know, we. We do need to get that that schedule back in line. And then, and I think part of what you'll see come back with when we do our capital facilities plans that was mentioned briefly. And well, it's right. Here are the impact fees studies of capital facility plans. Um, that will have a ten year project list, and it doesn't include repair and replacement as an impact fee eligible. But it includes replacing that type of equipment on a time schedule so that the city is aware of it and it's in everybody's eyes and minds.
Plus, we'll be probably. Including more parks in the rotation schedule.
Yes.
As the city grows, but my point here is if we replace two parks this year. And they're on the same ten year rotation schedule. In ten years now, they're also replacing two parks in a year.
Yeah.
And the equipment up there at Lowman View is in still very decent shape. Councilmember.
I I thought the Wadman Park was more of a safety issue, as in we weren't planning on replacing it this year, but. Because it was deemed unsafe, we had to, I thought that's kind of why two came in one year versus just the one that's usual.
Wadman Park, I think, how old was it?
Uh, it was, I think it was ninety five. I don't know, uh, but it's twenty to thirty years.
It was a gravel pit when I started. So what's happened here is we have, there's nothing there at that park.
Yeah, right, and that's been removed.
Equipment's been removed, so. A bit of a prioritizing, we'll probably need to take care of Wadman because it has nothing.
And and one of the things Jamie's working on, um, she is listening, so she can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we can, if we can. Get our ten year plans or, you know, if we go out thirty years. Then what we can start doing is timing things a little better, the idea being that. One year. We might save and not replace everything because the next year we're doing a playground and a snowplow, for example. Or we might stagger it, so one year it's a playground, the next year it's a snowplow. Um, but the mayor's right that as we add more parks, we might, we will likely get to a point where if we're doing the. You know, the fifteen to twenty year recommended schedule, we will need to replace a park playground every year. And so, but that's kind of why we're trying to, just trying to get us to that long term planning. Is that we're not making a twelve month decision, we're making a sixty or a hundred and twenty month decision. And we just know where we are in that. In that schedule.
One thing that keeps falling off the agenda here is. You know, we committed to do Barker Park. With twenty years into that thing, and so. If if we can't even afford to keep up the parks we've got now. Got a fifteen million dollar bill sitting out there. I know we get some contributions, but I don't think that park should be built free for fifteen million bucks. I know you're good, council.
We're almost done. Another meeting today?
Yeah, I did get a call on that.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's that's the the dilemma we face. And is getting a proper rotation schedule and inserting parks as the city grows.
And one thing, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not saying this is a. I, well, I do think it's a good thing, but with with the replacement of the police station. The oldest building the city will have that needs to be replaced is this one. And it's thirty years old, which means it has twenty to thirty years of additional life left. Which means the council then has the opportunity. To take all of our capital project funds and spend it on roads and parks. Um, that doesn't mean there's unlimited funds available or, but it just, it it frees up a little bit of money. Because. Uh, the Parks Building is new, Public Works is new, Police Station will be new, Senior Center's new. And, you know, new enough that they're, that this is the oldest one, I think this one was built nineteen ninety two. Or ninety one or something, there's a brick somewhere that says when it was built. And Susan knows where it's at, but anyway, so we um. We we have an opportunity over the next twenty years to focus on some of those things you're concerned about.
And John, what is our uh impact? What's the balance or impact fees in in parks and? And water?
Um, so both of those are negative. Meaning that we have expended or built more infrastructure. Than was required. That may sound funny, water's a good example. If we build a eighteen inch pipe instead of a twelve inch pipe, there's some capacity in it that we can have a balance for. Parks are more problematic because. That negative balance hasn't been significantly reduced over the past twenty years. And if we don't, if we don't change our approach on parks there, then it'll never go away. Meaning we, the developers will always owe owe the city money, if that makes sense.
And and John, I believe that uh we have waived some. Park impact fees for some of the development in the city. Patriot Point, I think.
Yeah, they did what's called the fee in lieu.
Right, so.
For the dedication.
Like mills, but I think in water. We're probably going to always have a deficit there because trying to keep up and get infrastructure. But I do recall, I think it was down, but it's when it came. That you should never plan on having a negative balance, impact fee balance, and. Says that's not good practice.
And I think there are accountants who would, who would. Change the way that we would structure our account. And so with this impact fee study that's being done right now, that's being worked on. I think that we will see those consultants come back and it won't be erasing the debt, it'll be accounting for it differently. Um, basically saying um that. It's not a, it's not a negative balance, but it's what they call it's a, it's a uh buy in. Or it's a excess capacity balance. And it still shows that the city's owed money, it just isn't showing up as a negative, if that makes sense.
And and the fact is, it's just kind of a subcategory of the general fund. Parks is a general fund. Situation, so it's just whether it comes out of the impact fees. Or general fund.
Yeah.
Then in essence, it's just the general fund, we've extracted money out of there.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, assuming our balance is two million dollars, that means the general fund or the capital projects fund has spent two million dollars more. Than we really needed to on parks. Um, and the the idea being that future residents, we're building facilities for future residents, but I think there's a. A disconnect on how that's been handled in the past twenty years.
So in essence, what's happening, instead of that being covered by, the city's been covered by tax dollars.
Hmm, yeah, it's been fronted by tax dollars, yeah. Um. Any, any questions on any of these general funds, any other ones that you want to highlight as ones we should bring back on, is it necessary this year?
The WFRC, can you scroll down, John?
Mm hmm.
The the WFRC grant for pizza.
Mm hmm, or plaza.
Okay, well, from here, it looks like pizza. Kidding. Just try and add a little levity here.
No, so there's not a question? So we we covered a couple of things on parks, like uh replacement schedule, does the council have anything you need? Uh, additional information from Tiffany, but because I think some of it we will bring back because I think we. Yeah, the question is to identify tonight, what are the things we have questions on, and then we can bring back the discussion on why or why it isn't needed.
Councilman Barker, I think he has a.
Yeah, so. We're talking maybe delaying Lowman View Park for next year. And but could the reasoning being do two parks this year in twenty, ten, fifteen years, have to do two parks again? Do we have anything scheduled for next year? Because then we'll run into the same.
It's one additional thing, Councilman Barker, we're three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the hole.
But my, I understand it.
Three hundred and eight, sorry.
If if we're gonna delay because we don't want two parks this year. What if we have two parks next year? And then we have Shaw Park coming on in the year after that. So, uh. I just curious if that's something scheduled for next year.
So Lowman View is our next scheduled park, um. Actually scheduled out for twenty twenty five, the reason that it's on the list sooner. Is because, as we talked about before, playgrounds have a ten to fifteen year lifespan. And ours are pushing twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine years, so we've had to replace or remove components of it. And it will get to a point like Wadman where it will be taken down, it won't last through the next years. We can delay it, but it'll just get to a point where we keep it down. They don't make replacement parts for that age of playground anymore. So we're unable, when something breaks, we're usually welding a barrier. To go in its place, whether it's a slide or something else, so there's very little left. On that playground. We're also going to, just for consideration, we'll also need to update the playground rotation schedule because we will be pulling in a couple more new playgrounds online. And so we can't afford to stretch that timeline any more than thirty, our current rotation is still only a thirty year rotation.
We talked like regardless, we'll have additional parks in between that thirty years too, that will be. Building and putting equipment in. So I think it was, it was twofold, one is. You know, how do we cover the deficit? And, you know, do we spread it out a little bit as much as we can? Because I think if I'm hearing Tiffany right, we push this out and out and out and out, and suddenly it comes to a. Screeching head. And we don't want to pass that on, in my opinion, to future councils. But they have the same problem.
And you're doing a lot of the heavy lifting, council, and in fact, after this budget's done, we'll be coming back with that ten year discussion. To establish the policy that'll make it easier for future councils to come in and review. And we'll say, these ones are done, here's a couple added, but we'll be looking out ten years and the decisions will be much easier. So thank you for doing all the hard work.
Hmm.
Um. Was there any questions on on the the enterprise funds or? Any, any concerns, and it, some of it's going to tie into our next discussion about fund balances, but.
What was the impact fee study again? I need that probably re-explained.
So in order to charge impact fees. Uh, we are required to do what's called an impact fee study, um, most of them are completed by outside consultants. Um, and the idea is it's a piece, it's a document. That shows developers. Why we're charging what we're charging and what those projects are. And if you look at the impact fee study, um, sixty thousand of it is general fund. Which is streets and parks and public safety. Um, and then there's, there's additional money from the enterprise runs from water, sewer, sewer and storm that cover their portion of it. Um, because we're doing all of them, in fact, we're including a new public safety impact fee, which will help recoup some of the cost for the building. It doesn't cover operational expense like employee time, it's. Anything on an impact fee study has to have a useful life of ten years or more. And can't be a vehicle, with the exception of fire trucks. Can be included if they're more than five hundred thousand dollars and the only people that pay for them are commercial entities. So residential people, components don't pay for fire trucks and neither do schools. It has to be businesses. So.
And so, John, where do our impact fees currently stand uh with other cities in the state?
Um, we are one of the highest in Weaver County. Um, we are probably. At my last count, uh, we are one of the lower, if you compare this to Utah County. But we are probably in the top. Uh, twenty percent if you look statewide. Uh, Washington County and Utah County are typically the highest. Uh, for example, Washington County water impact fee right now, I think, is seven or eight thousand dollars a whole. Uh, creeping up to ten really quickly. Um, and we're at thirty three hundred. Um, but not every city in in Weaver County, for example, charges a transportation impact fee, and we do, and that's twenty six hundred dollars a house. So we, we are one of the higher in Weaver County for sure.
Councilman Barbara, you have to come in.
Um. One thing to be, well, not cautious, but. The fire district did their impact fee study two years ago and our fees went down. So if we're counting on our study to come back and our fees will probably come down if we're one of the highest in the county. It may, the water and sewer and everything else may come down more. In mind with the rest of the county. But, but you have to do it.
I think that John could, with all these expenditures. I know we're talking about other man, you've already set the threshold for capital projects. On the, where 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 does this leave the capital projects fund? I think, I think we need to have this in the back of our minds. There's a probability that the. Public safety building could come in a little bit higher. Than uh what we originally anticipated, knowing what's happening with construction cost. So to me, we need to have. Money available to potentially cover that. If that's the case. But what what does the capital improvements uh project balance end up looking like?
Jamie, am I on the right sheet to grab that information?
You're looking for the the. The capital projects one we did yesterday? Yeah.
Okay, that's right.
So, yeah, the seven point four million is where we're looking at to be at the end of budget year twenty two. And so it includes. Includes everything for that we're talking about for budget year twenty three.
And so includes, includes everything for, that we're talking about for budget year twenty-three. And so at the bottom of the sheet, at the, at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so at the end of next year, we'll be at eight hundred thousand.
And is that, and meaning we'll be two hundred thousand lower than what we'd like to be with our fund balance of a million?
No, that includes the million, so we'll be at one point eight.
So that, that one point eight leaves that million dollar cushion, there'd be eight hundred thousand of discretionary money?
Yes.
Not muddy the waters, something just plug in the back of your mind, as we, Mayor's mentioned a couple of times that with the seven percent increase that we've already talked about. And everything that we have planned and everything that's been presented worth three hundred eight thousand dollars short in our general fund revenues. I have mentioned several times the thought of spreading our depreciation catch-up over three or four years versus doing it all once in, in a large chunk. We spread it over three years, that four fifty-five would essentially be a hundred and fifty, two and a half, hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. Instead of four hundred and fifty-five this year, we would do a hundred, let's call it a hundred and fifty-three, which would save us three hundred and two thousand dollars this year. Which is essentially the entire shortfall, without having to, and we still need to have the philosophical discussion about maintaining the rate and those things, but just where we stand, just that making that shift makes a pretty huge impact in what we're seeing this year, next year, and the year after that. It's something you just have in the back of your head. Okay. One more stone in the pond.
Well, and and maybe it might be good to, to go into that fund balance discussion, it's gonna, a lot of it'll focus on our enterprise funds. Because that's where we had, the council hasn't established some rules. So let me, let me make sure I share the screen with everyone who's watching online. But essentially, these are the numbers that we are currently are targets, are kind of the goal that the council set. Fifteen percent of our general fund is that, almost one point five million dollars. We are going to meet that number at the end of this year. And, and based on the discussion of where we're at now, we don't see us dropping below that number next year, assuming everything continues as we expect. However, that number's not growing significantly, which the council's real goal, and this is as minimum, the council's real goal is to get that back to the twenty-five percent. We can go up to a maximum of thirty-five, but you can see that we are not, we're, we're keeping it at the minimum without a significant move towards the twenty-five percent. Capital project fund is the million, as, as Jamie just said, our goal is, or what we'll be at the end of next year is the one point eight million, so we're, we're doing, we're comfortable there. Then the question is on the enterprise funds. And we, we haven't really gone through this. And so I've put some recommendations in here that I think, I'm not gonna say they're supported by anybody else, not because I didn't talk to them, but just because, I guess that I, I, this is my thoughts and feelings, and I think it's up for council discussion. But the idea is, they are, the enterprise are based on some sort of metric that's in their budget that we can measure against. And in the water fund, I actually felt that we need to have a fund balance that equals our, our annual operational budget, because it's such a vital service and requires so many things to continue operating. And then also, if we ever have a catastrophic failure in the water fund, it will be the most expensive repair of anything we have in the city. Meaning if we lost a water tank, you know, our estimate for what that new tank is gonna cost is significant. So it's, it's, again, just a recommendation. But the idea would be, our projected balance is, is going to be two million dollars at the end of next year, even without the projects. And our operational is one point eight, basically, one seven seventy-five, so we would be meeting what I would recommend the council would consider as the minimum balance we want to have. This number would obviously go up as we save money and plan for future projects, but again, it's kind of that minimum emergency. I should probably explain some of my logic. If there's a catastrophic event in the Los Angeles front, as you've seen across the country, FEMA shows up. And what FEMA and the federal government do oftentimes is when there's a declaration of a state of emergency from the governor's office, they come in with their checkbooks open, and if you've accounted for things and done things properly, they will reimburse you. However, that money doesn't show up three days after the event, so you have to have the money available to float and get you through the event until FEMA money shows up in six, eight, eighteen months, things like that. And so that's kind of the purpose of what I'm thinking for the fund balances, to carry us over into that timeframe. And the nice, the nice thing is, the state does allow us to share money through funds with the appropriate notice and hearing and things. So we can do inter-fund loans, the water fund could loan money to the sewer fund, the sewer fund could loan money to the stormwater, that kind of thing can happen. So that's a tool available, but that's why I'm kind of, the balances are based on, in my mind, what that catastrophic event might be. You can see with, with sewer and stormwater, I'm, I'm saying we should have fifty percent of our operation. A sewer fund is, again, gonna end pretty close to what I'm recommending. A stormwater, as you can see, is well-funded, significantly over-funded, you might even say. Part of that is preparation for additional projects. But part of it is maybe money that we don't need to have, we shouldn't, that it has, we, that we haven't had a significant malfunction or problem, that we shouldn't either look at projects or maybe look at amending our utility fees, so that we are chipping away at this balance a little bit to get closer to the three hundred and fifty in a way that could offset maybe the increases in some of our other funds for utility fees. That's what we did in the storm fund, or the solid waste fund. That, that balance used to be significantly higher, and we've gradually chipped away at it and chipped away at it to try and offset increases. And you can see, we still have a fairly healthy balance. Although on the solid waste fund, I am recommending maybe fifty percent of what our republic contract costs or our waste hauling. The idea being that if, if there's something wrong there, we need to be able to continue to pay for that if, if money stops coming in. Again, if we have a natural disaster, I imagine most of our residents, maybe those automatic payments will still continue to pay for trash collection. But there, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a money inflow problem that we'll have to address as well.
John, if my memory serves right, we ate into the solid waste fund balance about fifty thousand last year. And we thought we'd be able to do that for two or three years. That projected balance of three ninety-five is much, you know, that allows us to do it for eight years. What, what changed there? I, I didn't think we had that great of a balance in solid waste.
Jamie has unmuted herself to answer your question.
I'm not aware that it, that it was going to be down that low. I would have to go back and see what, what the discussions were in the past, so. I don't have an answer for you, sorry.
And, and one question, and this might be something that, with, with what Ryan and Dave have done with the solid waste fund in our trash cans. Technically, they're owned by the residents. When they get old enough and they fail, we replace them for them. If they melt them, as Ryan, as the fire marshal's aware of, on Jan, on July fourth or the twenty-fourth, then they replace them. But if we had a major wind event, at a hundred and twenty bucks a can and twelve thousand cans, that's one point four billion dollars worth of trash cans in the city. You were taking several thousand, so. If, if there was a huge replacement because of a windstorm, we would be, it would be a question of, are we making residents pay for it, are we covering it? So that's a, that, we have, we've had some pretty good windstorms and haven't, we've lost a lot of cans, but not the whole city. And that, but I guess if we have that big a windstorm, cans might be less important than trees, because we'd lose a lot of trees too, so.
Just a heads up from Jamie regarding Councilman Swanson's comment. I'd like to know how much of that is incremental, because if we defer a hundred and forty this year, does that mean it goes to two eighty next year? Third year to four twenty? With the increment, you know, how much of this is catch-up versus actual depreciation? That we need, so when it comes to that, if she'd be prepared maybe to answer that question? Sometimes kicking it down the road, it just accumulates, and you, you get yourself caught. So if she could maybe think about that and give us a answer on that when times appropriate.
Okay. And, and so, and I, and I really, I'm not, you're not gonna hurt my feelings if you don't like these percentages. They're a, they're a throwing a plate of spaghetti at the wall and seeing what sticks. It's, there's no science behind it, other than what mentally makes me feel a little safe, I'm being able to float for six months while we wait for FEMA.
And these are operating, percents of operating costs, this is an accumulation of, of what we've done with the water to, is, this is a percentage of operating costs.
That's correct, thank you for that clarification. So it, it is totally fine to say this isn't conservative enough. I know one of the things we talked about as a vision was preparing for emergencies and, and being ready for that kind of stuff, and so if the council wants to accumulate a higher number than, than what's being recommended, that's, it's totally fine to, really, you're not gonna hurt anybody's feelings in this room. The flip side is, obviously, there's a cost to, to build that balance.
Any comments? John's speaking. I don't think this is unusual, a lot of the things I've seen are, you know, having fifty percent of the operating budget available for emergencies. I think John's point on water is, is important and a hundred percent. Although all those services would be very important. But you can't live without water, you can live with garbage stacks up in your front yard, I guess.
I think that garbage service has gone strike in the UK about every two or three years, right, and just piles up. And then it all ends up down at the legislative doorsteps, I think is what they do, right?
So, feedback, Councilman Alpes, you have some feedback for John?
When you were saying that the stormwater fund seems to be in a pretty, pretty darn good place, does that, do you feel like that provides us opportunities in this budget year to, to look at what, what can be done there? Or is this more of a long-term type, type of discussion for that?
I, I think it's both. The idea being that council could look and say, okay, we're, we're talking about maybe doing a, a rate increase on residents of two dollars and fifty cents for our utility rates. There might be an opportunity in the short term to absorb some of that into this stormwater and chip away at the fund balance and use fund balance to cover operations. The caution is, eventually that subsidy, or whatever you wanna call it, will go away. And if it's on a year that we have to increase rates for other reasons, it turns that year, you get that two fifty plus, whatever. And so it's cautious, but the other thing is there, I'm sure Dave and Dave, you know, Dave Smith and, and Davis Binoza could come up with ways to enhance our storm systems.
Plus, I think, a question I have, John, does this include the potential gain from the sale of the storm water project down here on twenty-six and a half?
I was waiting to see if Jamie unmuted, I don't believe it includes the, the gain on the sale of that property.
It does not.
Which is the high probability, so that just increases it. Here's the other thing, though, what, what's happened is, that's been accumulated on the backs of residents in the city for the last fifteen years. Right? So then all the residents benefit from that, I mean, if we wanna edge that balance down, you know, there might be other ways to look at that too. But that, that could even grow larger based upon the sale of that property. I think we'll be discussing a little bit, it's a close meeting tonight.
And one thing, and this is a credit to previous councils, and not anyway, this is not a jab at the current council, but our enterprise bonds have functioned very well not using bonds. And if you talk to some of the other communities in our area, a good, a significant portion of their operation budget is to pay for bonds. And the usual kind of estimate is, it's about a dollar eighty for every dollar you bond for. When we did the public safety bond, the rates were way low and it's not, that's way lopsided. And anyway, you saw the analysis where it was more expensive to wait and try and catch up than it was to bond. And that's the logic that they use, but Ogden City redoes their bonds every five years and they just keep rolling and rolling. Not, again, that they're not doing what we're expecting them, but we've been fortunate.
John, we know there's going to be replacement of certain things, that's why we kind of talked about using ninety percent of depreciation to accumulate, because we know that these are operational, but it doesn't necessarily cover replacement down the road of existing, let alone, you know, the impact fees used for new. So, you know, I, the council ought to consider that in, in there too. Potential replacement of things, you know? Any feedback from Mr. Call, the council?
I, I like it, I think the numbers, at least the way I think, seem to make sense.
Yeah, it makes sense to me too, and the other thing is that you're working with these numbers all the time as the city manager. So I'm comfortable if you're comfortable, kind of, you know what I mean? I'm not playing with these numbers all day and actually seeing what's coming in, what's going out, and as you work with the department heads. You're a pretty conservative guy and you, you're good with numbers, so I, I, I trust your, your gut on what you're wanting to do.
One out of two ain't bad.
And, and they, the other nice thing is, they're not gonna be set in stone, right? It's a, it's a discussion the council can have every year of, are we comfortable with our fund balances? Or every six months?
Okay, John?
Okay. We're onto the, the main attraction of tonight. Uh, which is salaries and benefits. So, uh, I'm not gonna click to the slide yet, because I don't wanna still, I wanna have a conversation with everyone. But I, I think, I think it's very important for the council, the department heads and the employees of the city to recognize what the ground we've made up over the past five, six years. And what I mean by that is, the council has been extremely aggressive on getting people to what, what we consider market rate. Right? And market rate is a range, and it's not super well-defined. And what we're trying to do is constantly measure ourselves against other cities. But we've done some things, and the council's done some things to catch us up. And what I mean by that is, when we first really went aggressive on this and moved away from our old model, that really wasn't working, we had probably sixty out of our eighty employees who I would consider undercompensated. Some of them significantly undercompensated. And over the past five years, the numbers we're looking at now, we, I would say there's still a few, but they are close, and what I mean is, they're within a dollar of what we'd like them to be at. And what we'd like them to be at is, is the average income of someone in their position of a city our size. Does that make, so, meaning there, we want them to be at a hundred percent of that number. Some of them are falling at the ninety-five percent of that number range. And we're talking, again, about maybe twenty, and the gap is, in some cases, it's, it's five cents, it's ten cents. But where we, where we used to be, it was significant. And I know several of you were involved in those conversations. And the nice thing about that is And the nice thing about that is the target is always moving. Um, and with a lot of the aggressive things the council has done over the past years and even in the past year. You know, it's like the targeted increases for the police. Um, we have, we have dug ourselves out of the hole that we were in, you know, Mayor Verubie was on the compensation committee. Eight years ago?
I think it's ten.
It's been a while. It's been a while. And he can tell you that that committee was was extremely disappointed with the council's response to their recommendation. And it might have been, maybe the council's even not the right person to pin it on, but the response by the city to their recommendation. And I think in that timeframe, we've come a long ways. And it will always be a battle.
Although, forget reading the minutes where uh this agreement paid the police at twenty fifth percentile. That's doesn't apply anymore.
And and the other component, and this is not as much for the council, but more for the employees who are listening or will listen. But the other thing we're we're doing is we're trying to take away the green curtain. You know, we're trying to eliminate the confusion, and the plan this year is in July is to have every department head. Um, and me, if I can, sit down and explain the compensation, explain how we got to the number. And show why the council has basically. Been attempting and met the goal of that that number, that hundred percent of the cities of our size. So, um, and it'll be, it's not a hard number to get, we get a report, it spits it out. That compares us with other cities, and then we we do also look for outliers. Meaning individuals who maybe we're compensating based on who we're competing with. Good example is building inspectors and police officers. We are, we are more aggressive with them because there's a a more competitive market for them. Um, we're seeing that and it kind of ebbs and moves. Um, we're also starting to see that it's not competitive with. Uh, lawnmower, lawn mower crews, it's just that nobody can find anyone, and so we're gonna see, we're gonna see some of those things starting to move quicker. And the city having to be more aggressive on if we're gonna keep this the level of service. Or we're gonna have to be more innovative. Um, that position with the sewer that we talked about earlier, that we we talked about using the S, the SL rat company. We had that position open for eighteen months. And never had anybody apply for it because the people don't wanna work in sewer, even though. It's not, it's not as dirty as you would think, most days, most days. There's a lot of robotics involved, it's not that picture of the guy in the sewer as often as you might think, but anyways, so.
John, can I just add some color to your comments? I think as we go through this, we need to keep in mind that we're in a really unusual situation right now, something we haven't been in for. Many years. So we look at it and say, well, here's the adjustment we're gonna make in July. I think we need to keep our eye on that, and it may be more than one adjustment. Uh, in the marketplace. And so to manage our budget down to the the dollar, maybe. And I think Councilman Swanson, and I had a conversation with him, and I think his exact words were. He feels we're in more uncertainty in the economy now than we have been for quite some time. I think GDP was down, what, one point four or five percent last quarter. Uh, inflation knows what's gonna happen, but I just would throw that out, that uh. Things may change from the historical approach of, you know, one time in July and see you next year. I don't know, but I think we gotta make sure we keep that in our in our minds as we go through the budget process.
Yeah, and in fact, that's, you know, with the mayor's help this past year, you know, obviously the council. Um, we actually did a targeted adjustment for a group of employees in October, if you remember that. Uh, we did five or six employees in January. And then later on in January, we did the entire police department, or at least all the sworn officers. And so that I think what the mayor's saying is right, there's gonna be a concept finger to the wind of how we respond. And that kind of flexibility, so. Any questions before I move on to the slide that everyone's waiting for? Um, just so you know, there are rumors and truths out there about what other, every other city's doing. What's happening, anytime we hear something, we try and validate what we can. Based on what we're seeing. Mayor shaking his head. Um, but uh, this is a summary of what we have, so we've got eighty-one employees, twelve of which fall under the enterprise account. Or the enterprise accounts. Um, five of them are are five of the total employees are part-time. I know you're all skipping ahead of me, but I'm gonna keep talking anyways. Um, there are more people in it in uh public works than those twelve, it's just they they classify under the general fund. Although some of them are compensated through that admin transfer that happens. Um, but what what's being proposed is a minimum increase of five percent or one dollar. And the reason I say or one dollar is there are some employees that five percent doesn't equal a dollar, and so the decision was made to. Make a dollar the minimum, so that it's fair. And then there's a ten percent max, so um, there's. There are hardly any employees who are getting that ten percent map, I shouldn't say say hardly any, but it's it's not like there's thirty people. Who are getting that, the majority of employees fall, obviously fall between those two numbers, and the average is about six point three percent. And then again, we also, and I forgot to mention this, are tracking each individual individual position now to see how their. Positions are moving year over year or every six months. So that we can see if there's big leaps and moves that we can, the council can maybe be, needs to be aggressive and get ahead of it. Like the mayor was talking about. So the total cost of the general fund is two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, that's salary and benefits. Um, and then enterprise is forty-eight thousand, that's actually up from the number that's in the budget. Uh, because we did a a last, not a last minute adjustment, but we made an adjustment to make it clear. Uh, that the five percent. It, we we've said the minimum of a dollar. And um, we just wanna make sure that it's a, that it's communicated the value of that dollar or that amount, if that makes sense.
And John, there are some below five percent, which is the minimum, and those are those who are already being paid above. By the market rate.
Yeah, so we.
I just wanna clarify that, because other otherwise, we just keep paying people above the market rate, so they're still gonna get a minimum buck an hour. But they're not going to be guaranteed the minimum five percent because they're already above the market pay.
Yeah, and and the the concept there is the the minimum of the dollar is is intended to give people. An offset to those fundamental costs, you know, it essentially it adds up to about a hundred and sixty bucks a month, that's before taxes, not after taxes, so. But those lower tax bracket individuals who are paying for gas and milk and things that. Really do impact them in a significant way, it it. It helps, um, there are other jurisdictions that are are doing more than this, or are saying they're doing more than this. Um, it's still gonna be interesting how it always comes out, I I did a, or I was part of a survey. Uh, that Utah City Managers Association did, and I think the highest that I was seeing from those who responded. Was in the nine percent range, ten percent range.
The average is four point seven six.
Yeah.
Is what the average raises city managers were saying they were gonna provide to their employees were six point three.
And 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 so there's there's always this balance of comparing ourselves to others. And comparing ourselves to us in the past and picking a plan for the future. Uh, one of the things that I have a real strong belief in is there are intangibles you can offer. That that make a difference, they don't necessarily get someone's foot in the door. Because people don't know the intent, but you keep them, and I think North Ogden City does a good job at offering those things. Um, you know, it's the little things like the the cool passes and the greenways passes and the. You know, we're talking about how we can uh offer. So employees that get the same discount on our facilities as they rent like the senior center or the Bowerys. Um, and there's even a conversation about. If they're not being used, do we just let employees use them for free, or I don't, so there's there's other things we can offer.
And I checked checked with several large employers, and they're in the five to six percent range, so at six point three, we're. On that upper, upper side. Plus, I think one thing people don't recognize, and I'm not complaining about this. But the average uh private company pays about seventy-two percent. Of healthcare, we're paying ninety-five. Percent is, people don't sometimes look at the benefit of that, not having to come out of pocket with that. Now, obviously, there's some that might be paying a hundred or ninety-seven, but, you know, I think sometimes we forget. But that does reduce the. Expensive people have to come up with, so. We're trying to stay competitive on both, both ends of benefits and so.
And that's a, that's a, any questions about this before we lead into the benefit side of things?
I think, I mean, these are compared to market rates for cities. I think a big consideration that we need to think of is some of the people in the city. Will be looking at leaving for more private sector opportunities as well, so. While we're trying to keep up with comparable cities such as North Ogden, across, you know, Weaver County or maybe a little further area. Um, I think we need to consider that there are others that are gonna leave for for even more, but. I think this is a great start, and I think it's a. It's necessary, we need to invest in the employees.
JD, I think that's a good point, and so that's one thing I've discussed with John before. I try to keep with my contacts, and I think we, you know, there, I've always said this, if you wanna leave, you can always find a higher paid job. If that's your goal, you know, because we're, you know, we're used not to high spending. But for comparable positions, I think we really cut up pretty close to the private sector for comparable positions. So that's not to say somebody may wanna go from this job to a sales job or something like that. But for comparable positions. Say we're very, very close to the private sector. Now, it's hard to, you know, compare some of those, because private sector. Doesn't have water, they don't have sewer, they don't have those type of things, so it's difficult, but when you look at lifetime jobs. Uh, we're very competitive. Not that there's a higher pay. Saying, you know. Um, but what's, in talking with the the professionals that do the studies. Uh, maybe a lot of them, what they're seeing is a lot of pressure on IT. People, a lot of pressure on frontline workers, professionals and management, not as much pressure. But frontline workers and IT. Big time.
And and you all have experience too, right? I mean, so we, any feedback we can get is always good. Um, so, other other thoughts before we move on? Okay, I should probably, the the next slide really only looks at healthcare benefits. Uh, because we, with all of our other benefits, medical, dental, um. Accident and things, uh, the rate is steady, we're not getting an increase, so on medical, we are getting an increase. Of six point six percent. Um, and the question to the council is, how how do you want to do this? And how do you want to continue this program moving forward, because. You know, myself is an employee who gets insurance through the city. Um, I'm not confident the city can continue to sustain what we have continually. And what I, what I mean by that is, we we currently offer four healthcare plans that have a different premium every month. And some of those we pay ninety percent of, some of those we pay ninety-five percent of, it depends on the the plan the employees select. What ends up happening is those gaps have gotten bigger and bigger over time between the plans, and if the city's even paying ninety percent. Of a very expensive plan, the out of pocket to the city is quite a bit more than what we do for the cheaper plans. That we pay ninety-five percent of. And so the question is, how does the council want to work on that or look at that? And the other competing interest we have is, there are cities out there who are now starting to. Uh, at least one that's self-funded, which is Ogden, the the gorilla in the county. Um, they pay employees to not take healthcare benefits. And some of our employees have asked, can we do that? Can the city institute that kind of a program? Because several of them don't take benefits, about twenty or so, um, and then there are several who. Um, have spouses, who they could be on their spouse's plans, and in fact, we have some employees who are double covered. Meaning their spouse has a plan and they have a plan here with us. And so there's, if the city incentivized people to utilize other healthcare coverage. In some ways, it could help the city financially, but on the flip side, if we went that direction, you'd have to include all employees in the. The payout, as well as find a healthcare provider, a health insurance provider who was okay with that program. Our current provider does not let us pay employees to not take health insurance. So.
The reason being, you get too small of a risk. Place than the same. Then everybody, so you end up paying for it's not to take it, and those who take it end up paying more. Uh, because we have such a small base of. The insured employees, what was it, fifty-eight or something like that, John?
We have sixty-one currently.
Sixty-one, no.
Um, and if we fell under fifty, then our premiums would go up. I it's, I hate to give an estimate, but a lot. So we have a neighboring community with less than fifty employees, and they're in a small group, and their premiums are significantly higher than ours.
About five hundred bucks.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, is sometimes you you lose, you you incentivize and then you lose. It costs more than not. Um, but the caveat to that obviously is, the city needs to pick a program that works for the city and and works for the employees. And in some ways, keep an idea of what is going on around us. But I don't think that we should necessarily do everything everyone around us does. A good example is Roy covers eighty-five percent of healthcare. Which is, that's a significant amount less than we cover. You know, you're talking three hundred dollars less a month or so, uh, in some cases. Other cities cover ninety percent or ninety-five. Um, but they only offer one plan, and all their employees are on a high deductible plan that's similar to the one we offer. But the employees only get one option, and then other cities actually do offer a hundred percent coverage, they pay the full cost. Of the high deductible plan. And ironically, it's not something we typically uh say a lot. Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Can you go back to that? I just wanna clarify that we're not depositing a thousand dollars with each paycheck. That's an annual contribution divided by twenty-six payrolls.
That's correct, yes.
Think we really lost our minds, even though we have.
Yeah. Um, well, and and that's actually the the one plan that the city, I would, I would argue pays, covers a hundred percent of, is our. Our lower. Our our less expanded network of doctors, that's the high deductible plan. The city, if you add in the thousand dollars of HSA contributions a year, covers a hundred percent of the cost. Because the the employee's monthly cost basically makes up the thousand dollars, it's it's a little less, but it's almost a thousand dollars. That is deposited every year, and so what you find is, you you cut it different ways, but the city is almost covering all the healthcare. And then the eight, the employees doing the HSA, we just route it differently and and essentially force the employees to save. For the HSA.
John, refresh my memory, do we have a match on the HSA? A lot of companies say we'll match what you put in up to X amount of dollars?
Uh, it it kind of is that way. Um, we don't require a contribution, but we require their, them to do their portion, and then we put in. A contribution that exceeds the their monthly country, their monthly.
That HSA is really, maybe some education would help, that is allowing employees to put something that they want. Because it is a really beneficial uh plan, particularly as you get older, it's almost like. Increasing your 401K.
Yeah, and and we we've done a little, a lot of education, Katie, um, and the, our brokers have tried to help employees understand that. That HSA money is, it's taken out before taxes. And you get to spend it on anything healthcare related, and at a certain point of age. Um, it becomes unrestricted money. Most people probably still save it for healthcare expenses, but if you wanted to buy a thirty-five foot. Most people probably still save it for healthcare expenses, but if you wanted to buy a thirty-five foot boat with it, you could.
Point out, two on behalf of the employees. You know, those who have a significant prescription costs are X costs. On a high deductible plan that, that can't be stripped out, so. You know, you're right out of pocket the first month if your prescriptions are like two thousand bucks. That is really kind of a heavy burden on. You know, people who are already facing difficult situations health-wise. So that's, I think, why we've offered. You know, a different plan too.
Yeah.
Just, just pointing that out, because it, it can be pretty difficult.
Yeah. So, uh, in, the market has gone towards, um, high deductible plans like. A lot of places, especially in the private sector, I don't know how much in the public sector. But, um, I feared going from a PPO to a high deductible. And since I've made the switch a few years ago when our employer basically required us to go that route. Um, I've enjoyed it since I started it. So, and a lot of, a lot of it was getting educated about what the HSA can be. And, uh, they've referred to it as basically being like triple tax advantaged because of what. Can happen when you're seventy, you can use those funds for basically whatever you want at a certain point. And so, and then one thing that I personally really enjoy about these high deductible plans is that it helps your. Your pre-tax amount really substantially, because you can donate up to seven, seven thousand dollars in a year towards that plan. And that seven thousand basically just gets taken away from your income and your taxes and kind of helps you get into a better bracket. So, I mean, that's something we should look at.
And, and because of that, but also because of the risk associated with it, that's why we force the deposit, the thousand dollars a year. Um, because, you know, that, that, that amount could grow to, to a hundred thousand dollars and, and someone will have that if there's a catastrophic medical event. Um, but anyways, it just, it allows for. We basically force the contribution because you, if we're on a high deductible plan, you have to have the amount because you're coming out of pocket. And, and not everybody can do that if they don't have the contribution. And some employees, we've worked a program out. Where we did actually allow them to take a little bit extra of that, not get it every. Paycheck, but we gave them a little bit upfront with an agreement that they understood it would. They would basically work that deposit off the rest of the year, however, to help with those type of things.
Yeah, I think JD had a good point. That's why I asked if we let employees contribute in or if there's some type of match, because. That can grow pretty quick and is, is really beneficial. But it, it's interesting on high deductible plans, do you know how many people meet their deductible or meet or exceed their deductible out of pocket a year? Three percent, I think, three to five percent. That's all we're. Uh, used above.
And roofers use, always hit it.
I hit it the second week of December, two years ago. I felt lucky.
Yeah, and, and I, I want to be very sensitive because everyone has different needs, right? You know, like, there's, there's, every employee has different situations. Um, but essentially, this next slide shows the, the monthly cost for the full premium. This isn't what the city pays, this is the monthly cost for that benefit. You know, the most expensive expanded network we have is sixteen hundred and fifty-four dollars a month. And the cheapest, which is that high deductible plan we have, is about two hundred and ten dollars less, two hundred and fifteen dollars left at fourteen forty-one. And so, if you, you're all, you're all gonna do math on your phones, I see everyone grabbing their phones. But if you do the math. It is more expensive for the city to pay for the high plan at sixteen fifty at ninety percent than it is to pay for the low plan. At ninety-five percent with the contribution. If that makes sense.
It tickles a hundred percent.
Yeah. And so, the, I think the question is, and I, and it's for the council, is which, which path do you want to take forward? Do you want to continue with the same program, knowing that. Some employees will get a larger monthly subsidy than others. Or do you want to standardize and say, okay, this is how much money the city is going to contribute to healthcare plans? And anything over that is on the, the employees based on your individual situation. Um, the caveat to that is, this, these are the family plans, obviously, if it's a one. Party or a two-party plan, they're cheaper than this. And so the question would really apply to, for each category, the city would pick a number, and that would be what we contribute. Um, monthly. The hard, the hard part, and I think that's where this comes in, is. Depending on the type of number you picked, it will have an effect on several employees. And it, and, and the, the worst one, which is, this is again, the most expensive expanded network. If the council picked this fourteen hundred and fifty-three number as our contribution to healthcare every month. Those employees' costs would go up by thirty-three dollars a month, which is about a twenty percent increase. Um, in one year. Um, last year, the council's direction, you know, I'm, I'm sure you don't remember because it's been, I can barely remember it, but. We basically with, when we switched to regions, we held everyone's premiums steady. And the city actually did put in more money to, to overcome that. But, and, and so now the increase, depending on what we do, has the potential of basically catching up last year and this year. Um, and so I, I guess what I'm saying is. The question of the council is, do you like going down this path of saying, this is how much we contribute? Or do you want to stay on the path of, we're doing ninety percent of this program, ninety-five percent of this program? And then we contribute to the HSA if you're on this program. And that's not, I'm not making sense, I'm giving confusing looks. It's, and it's not, and this is.
And here, here's, here's the reality of the situation. If you read healthcare providers' profits are way down, right? They're not going to let that go on very long, so those that don't have a contract, uh, that goes out more than one year. Uh, I, I've got a feeling there's going to be dramatic increases in healthcare costs and premiums. If you, and, and we, we don't have a contract that goes out, we don't even have one that goes out really six more months, because they want to. They want to look at it again in January, right?
And, and that's, that's partially because of the provider we picked, they only do calendar year plans. And before, we were on a fiscal year plan. And so we're having to adjust our schedule to match theirs, but there'll be another bump in January. To, to compensate. The, the flip side is, if we re-sign up with them, the city gets a twenty-five thousand dollar. Credit for resigning. And in July of next year, we're on what's called a share plan. Meaning if the employees cumulatively keep our, our costs to the insurance provider low enough, we, the city gets money back. And I think our commitment with that is to, to.
Get it back.
Get it back to the employees. The trouble is, we're not to the point where we've gotten that share back, and we'll, we'll know what we think the number is going to be in January. But we won't get the tech till, the check till July, which is next fiscal year. Yeah, the following fiscal year. There's also a couple other options. We could just. Hold like we are, increase everything by six percent, six point six percent. If, and then those numbers would start getting a little skewed, the ninety and the ninety-five will turn into eighty-nine point five or ninety-six point three or. Um, uh, we could look at other coverages and percentages. There are some cities that round everything. So it's, hey, it's fifty-five dollars, it's not. Forty-nine point three, you know, with the rounding that, that accountants love. Um, and then there's other strategies the council might recommend we, we look at, which is. There are organizations out there that say if your spouse can get coverage, then they need to get coverage where they work. Um, that would have an impact on several employees, um, including some who have double coverage, for example. That it would, it would turn them into a, a two-party or a spouse and child type of a situation. So, it's a. This isn't, this is Pandora's box, or, but what's the, it's the Gordian knot? There, there's, there's not a right answer, because whatever you do is not going to be accepted or appreciated by everybody. So I think the council needs to pick a, a, a. Pick a line and go to it. Um, I, in my analysis, I think it makes a lot more sense to pick a monthly contribution number and stick to it. Um, and that it'll be a little painful this year, and next year's it'll flatten out and won't be as bad. But it just, it's very mechanical and methodical, and I, I really like that we have four plans people can. Can pick from. It doesn't cost us anymore, at least that's what Regent has said. It doesn't cost them anymore to administer four plans instead of one. Not every provider's like that, so. I don't know. Ryan has a comment, I can see him squirming.
Two people I make comments, we got.
I didn't know I had a comment. Yeah.
We're calling a council member Swanson.
John, could you, could you tidy all this up into a table? With options, pros and cons. We've gone through a lot this evening and trying to, you know, to visualize all this. Enables pondering and, and effective processing. It's a little muddy at the moment, at least for me. And a, a nice little table that you could email out to us that we could review and look and. ponder and ask questions about, for me, would be helpful.
He also has a dollar amount, I think, of, uh, what the increase would be.
All of that information would be very helpful.
I think he actually has that right now, John.
Uh, yes, I was just gonna pull up, the, the table is, is hard.
This is if we stay at, you know, ninety, ninety-five percent. City picks up the six point six percent of the increase, employees pick up the six point six percent.
So, this, this table is.
Total dollars, John.
Total.
Total, total dollars, John, no more. You know. Let total confusion.
So. The hard part is, is trying to, trying to build a table that works. I can show you what it looks like.
That's awesome.
So, um, here's, here's a worksheet that is based on the concept of a flat amount per month. And it shows what the, what the premiums are for the different. Um, things, I should, need to make sure I share this so everybody can see it. These are the premiums for each month. And then it breaks it down into, if the city is paying ninety-five percent of this column, this is the quote-unquote cheap option. With, with a thousand dollar contribution. If this was, if this was the number we picked and we ignored the HSA contribution. Uh, we can figure that out, or if we include the HSA com- com- or contribution and it spits this number out.
Hey, John, wasn't about forty thousand.
As the increase, yeah.
Okay, that'll give us a.
That's what you need, but, okay, so you didn't want the details.
Well, I think to Councilmember Swanson's point, if you send that out, uh, let people kind of study it. Cypher through.
Okay, so when you, when you get this, you can play with these three columns. One shows how much the city pays. One shows, um, what the other. I'll, I'll delete that one, you actually don't need that one anymore, but this is how much of the HSA is contributed. So if you turn that to zero, that basically changes what the city pays here. And it spits out a number at the bottom, but I'll, I'll give you some instructions as I send it out to you. Um, but if that's, it can answer any more questions, or if you're ready to.
Councilmember Swanson, go ahead.
So, it, you know, it feels to me like we are making a philosophical decision, more so than a. Financial decision. And maybe that's where we need to focus, is on the philosophy behind. Healthcare coverage provided by the city. Are we going to do, we continue as we have been? Or change to a system more like you are suggesting where we play a, a effect? Yeah, you know, the flat amount. And, uh, and then employees choose how they're going to use that.
I've had a conversation with John about this. Philosophically, here's my take. Is in today's employment market, I think we better be competitive. And I think it's, it's a little bit dangerous to kind of be flipping things upside down right now, in my opinion. I think we've got great employees here. I'm not sure now as to make a substantial philosophical difference. But, uh, my discussions with John, I said, John, we better make sure we're competitive in the marketplace. I think when it comes to benefits, contrary, uh, Councilman Dowpath, what you said, I think we do need to concentrate on cities. Because we start bringing in, uh, private companies, it just drives that number down. I, I just think right now, if you look at it, as, anything that's looked at as a takeaway. As hard as that is, I, I think in today's market, it's just tough. That's my two cents worth.
So with your philosophy, what program are you, would you recommend?
I think we, we stick with what we're at. City picks up their six point six percent, employee picks up their six point six percent. I think John, John is the one that's kind of introduced this fixed cost one. I, I think that needs further study. Like that termination. I think we've got, you know, kind of look at it overall and, and get the substantial education portion of it. But anytime that's like, when it's a takeaway, I think it's tough. What do you think, G?
I agree.
Now, you have a comment, Councilmember Parker.
Yeah, I, going back to the philosophy, it's whenever we care this, every year with budget, well, what benefits. Do our employees when we need, and I don't think our city's budget should be based on the backs of employees. So I agree with the mayor, we should keep, pick up our six point six and. Don't take anything away.
So the. Council's vote, but, you know, I think.
That's my vote.
It's very difficult to, in today's marketplace to, to let it take aways.
So the city takes on six point six percent and the employee does, or is this a six point six total? I'm, I'm missing that.
So if the, if the city's paying a thousand dollars, they pay, what, a thousand and sixty-six dollars? If the employees pay a hundred dollars, they pay a hundred and six dollars and sixty-six cents. So if, if it's going up, and if the money comes back, I think, you know, that goes back to the employees and. You know, I'm fairly tight, so. You know how much I think about, uh. To me, it's not a monetary situation. Let's be realistic, you know. The city can't always carry everything on their back either. So there's, at some point in time, there's a happy medium. But I think timing is everything. Timing is not real good right now.
I think when we talk about the city carrying its portion, we're really saying the residents carrying it. It's, it's their taxes that are, it's our taxes, it's residents that are paying for this. And so as we, uh, which, this also colors and informs the further conversation that we'll have down the road. Um, before we have a final budget, uh, what are we doing with our tax rate and those kinds of things? This all informs that discussion. Um, because it isn't the city that's carrying it, right? It's we as residents, it's the residents that carry it. So it's all part of that discussion.
Yeah, and one thing that we want to keep in mind too is that. The reason we pay our employees, the reason we offer benefits is so that people will show up to work and do their job and be happy about it. And that's really what we're going for here, and so, um. You know, when people have an expectation, they've gotten used to something, when you take something, that's. Nobody's ever going to be happy about that, in which case then, you know, even the bump in salary. Doesn't necessarily resonate with them as like a benefit, when they're like, oh, well, you took, but that, you took that away, and depending on who the person is. My, they might say it was like, well, they, it's more of a hose than a benefit, you know, the benefit increase.
You know, they, they forget that there's a hundred and sixty dollar a month minimum increase in salary.
Right.
But they gotta pay six dollars more in healthcare. Right? But, uh, Councilman Swanson's point, there's the basic.
But the Councilman Swanson's point, there's the basic equation, right? Expenses have to be paid out of revenues. It's so much, at some point in time, the burden, you know, we're trying to share that as much as we can. But as I've said numerous times, there, there's gonna be a lot of people out there right now whose total income has already been eaten up by inflation with gas, food, you know, just about every entity's increasing the property taxes substantially. And, you know, you end up reducing the standard of living for a lot of people, but, um, I, I think there's a lot of things we can look at and um I, I would say Councilmember Ekstrom, in my forty years in the business world, I've never had anyone come to me and say they're overpaid.
Nope.
Compensation always, all, you know, compensation always rates low on study, right? No matter where you're at. So I think we just have to do the, the best we can do with what we've got. And uh, you know, I think sometimes we, we do forget that uh, you know, where's the revenue trap from?
One of the things that's helpful, I don't know if we have this, uh, you know, having to go as self-employed and person and family. Um, the, the government marketplace insurance where there's thousand plans to choose from, one of the, the tools that's helpful to see is it will give you estimates. Yeah, out, out of pocket. It, because they're very, very different. So you can have a, a plan that, that seems like, oh, that should be a really great plan. It's very, very expensive. But then look at how much it actually pays. It doesn't mean pay very well. So, um, when you've got costs, if someone can estimate their costs, it's like, okay, if you're gonna have a baby this year, you're gonna have the surgery, or you're gonna have something like this. This plan is good for that. And, you know, we have switched our plans around based on, you know, things that we knew were No, no. Although my husband would No, but for some reason, he thinks it's more likely that I'm gonna have a baby than who's gonna get diabetes, which I just want. But one thing that might help, um, just with, with the employees estimation of their, their costs and, and then kind of what it is, it might be helpful to have something like that for them to see. Again, we're, we're trying to keep morale up and um employees happy in, in their, in their position. So, I don't know if that's something that we could, we could do.
Yeah, and, and it is, I mean, obviously it's included here as one of the options. It, this is the easiest thing and the most likely and the most expected thing from the employees. This is what they typically expect to see.
But conversely too, I think that, you know, we've got to watch it very closely because someone who selects a more expensive plan, you know, it's, it's not, because it attracts those who, who don't. So we have to kind of somewhere set a baseline, which I think we we want to. So, I don't know if you disagree with that. If you do, uh, contact John and let him know and go get that table out of suggested by Councilmember Swanson.
Well, I, I, I would say the main goal is that we're not taking aw, away from the employees, like the increase that they're going to receive in their salary. We just want to make sure that this, if there is an increase in the benefit amount, that it's not a large percent, you know what I mean? So, we wanna, we want their paycheck to reflect more. That's the end goal.
It, it will.
Yeah.
It will.
So we just want to make sure that we watch that.
Six percent of the premium they're paying is. What was the highest premium, John? Two hundred a month?
Uh, it will go from one sixty-eight to one seventy-nine or something like that.
So eleven dollars a month versus the minimum of a hundred and sixty. Right, so I think there's quite a gap.
Okay.
Okay. John, do you have anything else you'd like the council to uh talk you on? Because we've got obviously now accumulate all this into next week, figuring out what the real budget looks like. And uh, I think that's been sent out to all of you. But we've had presentations by each department. So now the hard work begins next week because I think we better have a tentative budget. And it has to balance.
Yeah, so you will have to approve a balanced budget as your tentative budget next week. Understanding that the final budget isn't approved till June or August if there's truth in taxation. So.
And like we said, we're, we're somewhat uncertain. Uh, as we have been for a couple of years on sales tax, but when you see the type of inflation, people cutting back on buying major appliances and big purchases, it could have an effect. On, rumor has, there's another grocery store coming in the area outside of our city, which could substantially reduce taxes for our two largest sales taxpayers in the city. So, that's why we need a little bit of a cushion as you think about things. Anything else, John?
No, I'm, obviously Jamie and I are available if you have any questions that get you in the middle of the night. Feel free to call us. Hey, call us after eight AM.
Look, look at the overall budget. And uh, we have to determine how to cover the shortfall and give ourselves a cushion. If that's our challenge. Okay. Council, any other comments before we move on to public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. Always, you're welcome to step up and comment tonight. We'll classify you as public tonight. John, if you uh have anyone online that would like to comment. Okay. Crickets?
So far.
Anyone here like to make a comment?
I have a question.
Step on up. State your name and if you're a resident.
I'm just curious if the three hundred and eight thousand dollar deficit is staying on the health plans we're on with a six point six percent increase or if that's taking something else into account?
It's with the six point six spread across.
Okay, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, I see no further public comments. Move on now, council. Mayor staff, any comments?
Councilmember Barker, looks like you have a comment.
Oh, so I learned something down, one thing down at the Utah League of Cities and Towns. There is a water program or a rebate program through Utah Water Savers that lets us, and I put in my address and it showed me as eligible to flip my strip. So there is an option out there for all of our residents. Um, unfortunately, you, you have to have grass. It has to be watered by pop-up sprinklers. There's, and they'll come out and inspect it, but there's that option out there. I don't know if there's a way we can, if I, I mean, I don't mind coming and meeting with Katie and let's get a social media message out there. There's also an option to rebate on your smart water controller for your yard and also for toilets to upgrade to energy efficient. So there's multiple options for our residents to help save water and actually get rebates for it.
That was utawatersavers.org?
I don't know. Yes. Give me a minute and I'll let you, utaw.com.
Dot com.
My bad. But utawatersavers.com and the fun part is you have to verify that you're a resident and you have an address and a utility bill. And so if you're on a private, well, they do not like you. I found this out in the last three days because they don't like me. But there's a lot of options out there that get rebates. So, I think we should do what we can to get that out.
Anything else, council?
Nope.
Anyone else?
Yes.
John? Uh, we've got a point that Susan, like she had something to say.
She reminded me and I didn't know she wanted the I didn't know she wanted the glory. Uh, so we are doing a budget open house at five PM next week. Um, we'll be doing a social media post. It's on our calendar on the website. Uh, that gives a chance for the uh residents to come in and ask questions if they have specific questions. Understanding, obviously, there, there will be a public hearing when the budget is approved or the truth and taxation hearing if that happens in August. So, there's more opportunities, including one next week.
We'll stay in this building as well.
Yeah, it'll be in this room.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you, council. Well, at this point in time, uh, we'd like to entertain a motion to enter to a closed meeting. Uh, this authorized by the Utah State Code. And John Call will be talking to us about uh some issues. Um, so I'd be looking at a motion at this point in time to enter into a closed meeting.
May I enter into the closed meeting?
Thank you, Councilmember Ekstrom. Do you have a second? Second, second, my Councilmember Swanson. All those in favor of entering into a closed meeting for the stated purposes, please say aye.
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 We'll ask all staff other than uh Chief Quinney. If he would stay, chief.